Thirty. You take your seats. The Chair will call the November 5th, 2013 Meeting of the City Council over if you'd rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Clerk please call the room?
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Jobe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. Before we get into the agenda, we've got a couple of items that we would like to do. First, the City Clerk's office will give a presentation regarding the Do the Right Thing campaign. Chief Winslow, would you come up and join our City Clerk?
I'd like to ask-
And it's Dr. Lemming here from School District 186. Okay. Would you like to join him?
Cody, would you like to come up here and join us, please? The City Clerk's office is proud to partner with Springfield School District 186 and the Springfield Police Department to recognize students who are doing great things in our community. The Do the Right Thing program was started in 2011 to recognize students who are doing good works in our community. Nominations are accepted at the City Clerk's office or at any Springfield school. Tonight, we are going to recognize Cody Beverlin. Cody is at the Springfield Ball Charter School. He is an exemplary student, self-motivated academically and caring socially. He has a passion for technology and helping others. Cody is a great assistant in the tech lab and helps other students completing their projects. He's a quick learner and takes the lead when working on group projects. We are excited to honor Cody tonight and the good works that he is doing in his school and his community. Congratulations, Cody.
I would like to say thank you to Lauren Smith for nominating me to be in the nomination. I would like to thank my dad for helping me with school and my grandma and grandpa's. I would like to thank Mr. Frost for just motivating me to learn more. And that's it.
As the principal of Ball Charter, we're very proud of the work that Cody's done, and we love the fact that we have such a good example for the other students in our school, and we hope that they follow his footsteps. So we hope the good work, Cody, we're proud of you.
I'd like to echo that. We're very proud of you and your family, and congratulations on your award tonight. A lot of good students in District 186, and Cody is a fine example of many of them. I really appreciate the City Council and the Alderman, the Mayor, the Clerk, and everyone making this type of a program possible. Recognition's important and motivates us all, and thank you for that.
Just as a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, if you know of an exemplary student in your award, or in the city, or in your neighborhood, please go to the website and download a nomination form. There are many, many students deserving of an award such as this and to be recognized by this body and by you in the audience is, I think, a very exciting thing, right, Cody? Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Cody. And we also have some other students that are with us this evening, and if I could ask the members of the Key Club here from Griffin and Southeast High School to come forward. I know that we have Cody Prosperini, who is the Sacred Heart Griffin Key Club President, and Sheldon Gooch, who is the Southeast Key Club President. And, you know, Key Club is a great organization. I look back and I see our county auditor in the back, and when I was Mayor the first time, first time I met Paul was when Paul was the President of the Kiwanis Club. And if my memory serves me right, you eventually became Governor of the Illinois Eastern Iowa District, and then went on to a very illustrious career in terms of Kiwanis, heading up the international type of organization. I always say from my high school days, there were two things that really had an impact on my life that just really set me on a course. One of those was being a member of the Key Club at Griffin High School in those days, because one of the things it taught me was that as a member of a group, you could do a whole lot more and have a much larger impact than if you tried to do things on an individual basis. And that's something that has really stayed with me my entire life and really tried to be very involved civically. The second thing is I played football, and while I was rather small for a football player, the one thing I did do is get knocked around a lot, and it taught me that every time I got knocked down, you had to get up and get ready for the next play. So out of my non-academic career in high school, those were the two things that I think have really helped me in later life. In terms of the activities of the Key Club, I mean, it is just a great service organization because whether it's Paul, or whether it's the literally thousands of people that have gone through the Key Club system into other civic organizations here in Springfield and around the country, it is a great training ground. And I do have a proclamation that I would like to read that says, "Whereas Key Club International, a high school service organization sponsored by Kiwanis International, is observing the week of November 3rd through the 9th, 2013 as Key Club Week; and whereas the Kiwanis Clubs of Springfield are proud sponsors of the Key Clubs at Sacred Heart Griffin and Southeast High Schools; and whereas the members of these local Key Clubs are part of an international organization of over 275,000 students who serve their homes, schools, and communities while enhancing their leadership skills; and whereas each Key Club member will achieve at least 50 hours of service this year; and whereas the students who are currently Key Club members will be the leaders of our community in the future. Now therefore, I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the City of Springfield, hereby proclaim November 3rd through the 9th, 2013 to be Key Club Week, and call upon the people of Springfield as support and make themselves aware of the Key Club students who are preparing themselves to be responsible citizens while providing service to our community." And I'd like to present this to the Presidents of the Club.
Hi, I'm Cody Prosperini, and like he said, I am the President of Sacred Heart Griffin Key Club. One thing he didn't say is the Key Club is the largest team-led service organization in the world with over 267,000 members. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples of what the Sacred Heart Griffin Key Club does to show you how important service, community service is to us. This upcoming month, we have our Thanksgiving food drive that brings together the Sacred Heart Griffin community as a whole, and we make food baskets for less fortunate families around the Springfield area. And what the Key Club does is buys turkeys to put in each one of those baskets, and this Thanksgiving food drive actually ends up helping over 100 local families celebrate a Thanksgiving dinner if they might not have been able to do such before this. Another thing that we do is this, one of our most important community service projects that we do, we did last year on a regular basis. We visit St. Pat's Grade School about every two weeks, and we hope to continue that this year to hopefully provide role models for certain students that may not have that before.
Hi, I'm obviously not a student. My name is Diane Henenfent, and I'm a sponsor of, co-sponsor of, the Key Club at Southeast High School. And I just want to thank you for recognizing the work that these kids do. Sheldon Gooch, our President, wasn't able to be with us. We do have James Borman from our club. The kids are so busy nowadays with all the activities, and for them to take time out of their schedule and to do volunteer work is so important. And Southeast Key Club would like to thank Mr. Palazolo and the SHG Key Club because they have been very helpful in getting our club back up and running, and we're just very grateful, and we thank you for the recognition.
Before we move on to the agenda, I'd like to call on Alderman Jobe.
Mayor, thank you. Good evening. Earlier this afternoon, the Illinois House passed the Marriage Equality Bill in the state of Illinois. I just got a text, it was just voted on a concurrence vote in the Illinois State Senate. I want to thank many of my colleagues here on the Council round for your support privately on this issue. You know I've worked very tirelessly. I know Alderman Turner has as well with many state reps in our immediate area, and it is finally the law, soon will be the law of the land in the state of Illinois. It's on to the Governor's desk for signing, and I just hope that this will end another round of discrimination in our community, and it's a new chapter in Illinois's history. So, thank you to all of you.
The Chair recognizes Director William McCarty of the Office of Budget Management for a brief presentation regarding city finances.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a couple of presentations tonight. We'll start with the financial presentation that I normally do, and then after that, I'm excited to be able to unveil a new financial transparency portal for the City of Springfield. From a revenue standpoint, we have a $2.2 million positive variance through September of this year. Now, I don't want anybody to get too terribly excited about that because we've had this conversation before. $1.6 million approximately of that has to do with the GASB recognition of revenue issue that we discussed last time. But we do have about $600,000 of natural growth over and above what we anticipated in there, so that is a good thing. We've also had some additional income tax payments come in this year. Unfortunately, the bad news is that that's been offset by some underperformance in a few categories of revenue that we have, specifically telecom tax, which is, I understand, is an issue in municipalities across the state, and also in our miscellaneous fees having to do with street reopenings, impound fees, and some other things. But overall, we are still up over budget, and that's the direction we want to go. Versus the prior year, we have a $4.8 million positive variance. Again, 600,000 of that is natural growth. The GASB issue is compounded or doubled in this situation because you're talking about two years, taking it from one, putting it in the other, so it's a $3.2 million impact. We have $1.5 million in one-time revenue in there, mostly related to the $1.25 million fleet loan that the Council approved this year. We also have the effect of a $500,000 Council-imposed pilot reduction last year that we're seeing this year, so that's part of that growth. And then, once again, we have some underperformance going on of about roughly a million dollars that we're going to see this year in those areas I just talked about. On the expense side, really no surprises, not a lot of concerns right now. We have a $862,000 positive variance versus budget. We're 58% of the way through the year. We've spent 53% of the corporate fund budget. We do have some pending payments for debt service, for transfers, and also we have a pending fire contract, I think, that, once it's settled, we will have retroactive payments that have to be made as well. So I don't know that we'll stay that much under budget, but certainly we're not tracking over at this point in time, and we're happy to see that. Versus the previous year, we have a $2.9 million negative variance. That's not unexpected. We have, to this point in the year, approximately $750,000 in pension growth. We also have roughly $600,000 in fleet-related expenses that, of course, we didn't have last year. The rest of it is basically related to natural growth and personal services and related costs, excluding pensions, of course. We've separated that. So that's your salaries mostly, health insurance, et cetera. I guess at the end of the day, though, what I want to say about expenses is simply just reiterate, we really don't have any concerns other than overtime, and I'll address that here in the recap. Once again, revenues are performing over budget. The majority of that overperformance, though, once again, is related to the GASB issue, and I can answer questions if you want to rehash that. Again, I know it was a couple of months ago. We also are a little bit concerned about the underperformance of some revenues, but that's being more than offset in other areas. Expenses, we've spent 53% through 58% of the year. We have some rather large pending payments yet to do. Overtime, we've been talking about overtime quite a bit, and what we're seeing is a trend towards probably $300,000 to $400,000 over budget in overtime. Most of that related to the Fire Department. Our trend in the Fire Department right now is roughly $300,000 by itself. Public Works and Police are coming back in line. Public Works is yet to be determined, depending on the weather this winter, but right now the trend is to come in a little under budget, assuming we have a reasonably easy winter. As far as the Police budget, we're starting to see some of that coming in line, although it looks like they may come in just a little bit over budget on overtime. And then, last but not least, of course, as you all know, we have a U.S. EPA project going on right now that we still have to pay for. We don't know what that final amount is going to be, but the current estimate is somewhere around a million dollars. The plan right now is to absorb that in what we expect to be a surplus at the end of the year, so the intent is not to dip into our fund balance in order to cover that. That's what we're hoping to do, and right now it looks like we'll be able to do that. So, questions?
Factory Road.
Yes, Factory Road. Correct.
The EPA project, is that the one we just approved a month or two ago?
Well, the one that CWLP put in front of the Council for their portion? Yes.
Yeah, where is that located?
It's on Factory Street, just 11th North, if you keep going north. Kind of where the, I think it's the American Center in that general area.
When you say expected cost of a million dollars, you're just talking about the corporate side of it.
Just the corporate side.
That doesn't, so the CWLP is also spending-
The total project, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the total project is in the 1.5, 1.6 million. That was their latest estimate? Roughly, yeah. When you're dealing with the U.S. EPA and projects like that, roughly is about the best you get.
And the corporate side, we haven't spent any of that money yet. That's expected in the future?
No, we don't, I haven't even put anything in front of the Council yet because we simply don't know what the number's going to be. I don't want to be presumptuous. I'd rather have the number and then bring something to the Council.
On the revenue side, what is the explanation for these bump-ups in revenue in June and September?
Probably pension-related. That's when we get our property taxes in.
On the revenue side, it'd be property tax.
Yeah, property taxes. Anything else? If not, we'll get into the other presentation. Help me with this. This is new. Hopefully, we don't have technical difficulties. We're going to take control of the monitors from here. Can you make that bigger? He did it yesterday, so this is like a full screen. Okay, we could literally spend hours on this, and I'm not going to do that because I don't think anybody has the desire to do it, but I do want to just give you a flavor for this. This can be found at www.springfieldopengov. It's O-P-E-N-G-O-E dot com. It's currently password-protected because we've been beta-testing the site for over a month now, but tomorrow morning, I'm going to instruct them to remove the password, and this can be accessed anywhere, at any time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And what you have here essentially is the city's financial data at your fingertips, including budgets, and you can drill down as far as you want to, as you'll see in a moment, and including year-to-date expenses by month, and you can even pick the month. So I want to start just by talking about the aesthetics a little bit. First of all, there's five different options as far as the visual representation is concerned. This is the default, a stacked line graph. If you prefer one by percent, just go up here, and you can choose. And you see, these represent the different major object codes. In other words, personal services, contractual, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. You can also do a regular line if you prefer. Those of you that are into pie graphs can do that. Or if you want the raw data, you simply do that, and the raw data is right there. And you can search through the history. Here's the pie graph. You can go down here, and you see how the apportionments change with the fiscal year. So what we're going to do is come into here and choose the data that we want, and you have all these options and all these ways to get to the data that you want. Over here on the far right, you have revenues or expenditures. We're going to start with revenues. I'm going to take transfers in, out of the equation, and just look at revenues. Right now, I've got all funds defaulted, so you're going to see every fund. Only thing that's not in here yet is CWLP, because we've been setting this up and beta-testing. We haven't engaged CWLP yet on entering their data, but that will come down the road as I get a chance to talk to Craig and Narin about this. So you can go through, just click what you want, and then here's the categories. We categorize this so that it's in the format that we typically talk about them. Taxes of local economy, other, share statewide, that's your income taxes, your PPRT. And the best way to do that, I talked about drilling down. So here's our taxes of the local economy, and you see, okay, it's 51.29% of our revenue, $80 million. Well, what if I want to know more about that? Double-click, and there's the components. Property taxes, home rule sales tax, city sales tax, and your other little pieces are down here, so you can get that data. And again, you can get it that way, budgeted. So that's just a taste of revenue. I'm going to go up here, I'm going to reset the data. I am going to do expenses now. Expenses are already chosen. Over here, if you want just to see a particular expense, like equipment or something, you can do that, but you can easily drill down to it. If you want a particular department, let's say we just want to look at the City Clerk. We come over here, pick City Clerk, and everything else disappears. It's not applicable. You can see in the City's Clerk's office that, like just about every other department, personal services and related are the biggest component. Get it any format you want. Now, if you want to say, okay, you say, all right, here's what we've spent by this major object level over the last few years. These are actual numbers. Here's our budget for this year, but you want to see what we've spent in the Clerk's office so far this year. We can do that by going up here and clicking on our year-to-date module, and suddenly, there's our actuals, 307,000. I know it's hard to see, just trust me, it's there. So you will have that option of getting the data any way that you want to get it. We've been talking about fire overtime. I know that's a concern to people, so what do we do? Or let's say we just want to look at the corporate fund. You come over to governmental, find general funds, click on corporate fund. Now, all we're talking about is the corporate fund. And you can see the different components in the corporate fund. If we want to look at, I'm only going to do two more, and then I'll see if there's any specific questions that you have. It's hard on the screen that I've got to maneuver around, so bear with me. Let's say you want to know what the overtime budget is in the Fire Department. Let's go to corporate, let's pick the Fire Department, and let's see what we got. As you can see in the Fire Department, it's no surprise that the majority of what their budget is, is the personal services. But if you want to know pieces of that, you come here, and you will see, double-click, and here's the components. Salaries, this is the Fire Pension. Now, this sort of, I know there's been a discussion on pensions, you can see just how large of a component that is in the Fire Department budget. And then down here somewhere will be overtime. If I click on this, it'll automatically highlight, and there's the overtime if I just want that. So you see, we've spent through September, am I still in the year-to-date? Yeah, looks like in September, through September, we spent 673,000 of the budget. Well, if I go over here, we look and we see we've got a budget of just about $700,000. And last but not least, let's say that you are someone who doesn't really know, you're not familiar with where things are, what departments, what funds, and I'll give you a prime example of this. A couple of months ago, Mr. Bishop back there asked me about workers' comp data. He wanted to know what was budgeted and what we've spent. Well, now, he's not going to have to ask me that, he can just get it himself. He can go here to our activities, scroll down and find workers' comp, which is right here. Everything that doesn't apply disappears, and here's our workers' comp data. Click on this, and you can see, here's our awards and benefits, contractual services, which includes triune and our TPA, and I believe our attorneys are in there. Personal services and friends would be our TTD payments, which are the payments made to people while they're off work hurt. And of course, this is the biggest component here. If you want to see what's in there, you just click on it. Let's go to the pie chart, and you'll see we've got our negotiated settlements, which you all see quite a few of. Then we've got the medical expenses, which is an equally large component. Then you have industrial commission awards. I think now it's known as the workers' comp commission. This is when we take things all the way through, and an award is made by an arbitrator or judge. And if you want to pull up the raw data, so now, in this particular situation or scenario that I told you, he would be able to go and see in our budget that we have $2.2 million budgeted for lump-sum negotiated settlements, $2 million for medical, 700,000 for the industrial commission awards, and 30,000 budgeted for death benefits. And if he wants to see what we've spent year-to-date, he can come here, he can pick his month. We've got August and September so far, and it'll grow as we add, and he can look and see that we've spent 823,000 out of lump sums, 551,000 out of treatments for medical, and about 86,000 for industrial commission awards. You can literally spend hours on this, and it will take some getting used to. I bet about after a half hour or so, you'll get the hang of it. But the general point is that for us, for the city, and for the citizens of Springfield, this represents a gigantic leap forward in transparency for the City of Springfield and specifically related to financial data. Everything is now at the fingertips of anyone in this room or anyone in the world, quite frankly. You can access this from China if you want to. There are no restrictions and no barriers, and the data will be updated monthly. Once you get the hang of it, it's very easy to query the system, and you can get as detailed as you want to get. That's it. That's all I'm going to show you. Do you have any questions? If not?
Who put this whole program together?
What do you mean? Well, this has been a priority, kind of a priority of when I came in, I'm going to kind of talk to the Mayor about some of the things that we wanted to accomplish. Financial transparency and increasing financial transparency was very near the top of the list, and it's something that we've been working on for the last couple of years. And we finally broke through, went to a conference recently, and in the exhibitor hall, I wandered across this company. It's a brand-new company. It was just probably less than a year old, maybe it's a year old tops. It all came out of a project from Palo Alto, California, wanting to figure out how they could put more data online for people to see. They engaged several Stanford students who built this thing, and then they turned it into a company. Springfield is probably their 10th or 12th customer at this point, it's brand-new. But the problems that we had been running into, we, is trying to find a system that was both affordable and could easily interact with our financial ERP system. The way that this works and the reason we broke through all of that, one, it's very affordable. It's only $6,000 a year. And secondly, we bypassed the interaction with the ERP system. We now download reports, send the data to the company, they upload it, and you're ready to go. The whole process probably takes them 10 minutes, maybe 30, depending on if they run any comments.
ERP stands for what?
It's our financial system. It's our financial system. So I think it's enterprise resource planning, it's a bunch of modules put together, but basically, it's our financial backbone.
So we send this company the data, and then they put it into this?
Reports. We send them Excel spreadsheets with all of the data, they upload it.
You know, the name of the company that?
OpenGov.
Open?
OpenGov.com. So, you know, at the end of the day, to answer your question, this has just kind of been a priority that we've been working on for a couple of years, and finally found the technology we needed to make it a reality.
Great, good job.
Thank you.
Director, if you could just repeat the website again, please?
Now, once again, it's password-protected right now, but tomorrow morning, I'll write them and have them remove the password. And the thing is, they're not done developing yet. I've suggested a lot of things to them that I would like to see, that they say they're working on. Two of those things that come to mind, to get to a point, and I took it off my computer, but to get to a point where you can drill down so much that eventually you get to the 11, I think it's the 1101 line, which is salaries, and then you drill down one more time, and suddenly you see, you can see salaries by either person or title in that department. They're not there yet. The other thing is vendor payments. I'd like to get to a point where we're putting our vendor payments online as well, and whether it's this or through a separate system, that way, if the public wants to see where we're spending their money, they'll be able to do that. They're not there yet, but again, I'd like to drill down. So you get into contractual area of, pick a department, my department. You can drill down in the contractual, and you can see what vendors we've paid out of those contractual lines, and you can see how much we've paid. It's just, it's just a whole new level of financial transparency that we've not even come close to before, so we're very excited about it.
This is just on the corporate side, right?
No, we're going to add, I mean, this, these, right now, what we've got is everything but CWLP.
Okay.
Oak Ridge is up there, sewer department, all funds.
What about the treasurer's office? Because they are the ones...
Treasurer's office is up there, that's part of the corporate...
Balancing the checkbook, are, Jim, you're participating in this?
Yep. Information's out there right now, especially with the salaries and so forth. You can go to the main page of the city's website, on the right-hand column, there's an open government, you can click on that, and that has financial reports, which would include what ISD has provided with regards to salaries for employees. But what OBM does, they have the invoice side of things. You're right, we issue the checks, but they have the invoice side as far as what comes through the pipeline on the...
Well, you actually have the balancing side too, though.
Right.
So you're showing the balances?
Mm-hmm.
So in his particular case, we're just showing the expenses of his department, not including anything else. All of the expenses for the city go onto the financial system. We're simply downloading the data, shipping it off to them on spreadsheets, they're uploading it into this program. And eventually, we hope to get CWLP in it as well.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you all.
We have one more proclamation that we have to do. What, members of the Springfield Fire Department? This side of the way. Whereas, the city of Springfield is very proud of all the firefighters that work hard every day to make our city safe. And whereas, the city of Springfield is well-represented by our firefighters at events outside of their professional duties. And whereas, four Springfield firefighters attended the World Police and Fire Games in Belfast, Northern Ireland from August 1st through August 9th. And whereas firefighter Ringenberger won a gold medal in the 400-meter hurdles, firefighter Shores, Zork, won the gold medal in the bench press and deadlift, making him the strongest firefighter in the world. I'm not going to mess with that one. And whereas, also representing the cities were firefighters Jagard and McCormick. Now therefore, I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, to hereby proclaim November 5, 2013, to be known as Springfield Firefighters' Day in recognition of the achievements of our firefighters. So in addition to protecting us on a daily basis, these gentlemen are also outstanding athletes.
Numbers weren't important, I'm just honored to be there.
You represent us very, very well. Thank you very much.
That's been a lot.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 15, 2013 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
I'd like to, I'd like to be recorded as voting present on 2013-419.
Okay.
419, Alderman.
Okay, motion carries, 10-0. Agenda is number 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-266, 2013-296, 2013-376, 2013-397, and 2013-398 remain table or in committee. The next item on the agenda is 2013-403, a resolution estimating real property taxes to be levied against fiscal year 2014 and financial expenditures for fiscal year 2015. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-403 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
I've got a question. This, this would keep the rate of property tax the same as it is now, is that correct?
That is correct. Further discussion. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes, 10-0. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2013-404, an ordinance authorizing execution of an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Sears Building Redevelopment Corporation through July 1, 2014. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-404 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
I have a question for Director Farmer.
Can you get your update? Can you get your update? No, not written.
Director, this Tiff project is to expend $2,520,000, is that correct?
Yes, again, it's, it's, it's two projects that were bundled together into one ordinance, one redevelopment agreement, two, two separate sites. As I mentioned last time, the Motor Inn and then the Staley Sears Building on Adam Street. So it's two projects under one redevelopment agreement.
Okay, so the $2,520,000 is for both projects together?
That's correct.
And do you know what the total, total cost of both projects together are?
I don't have it in front of me, Alderman.
Would this be about?
Mr. Barker, would you?
Yeah, I mean, we have a...
We have the developer here.
Oh, Mr. Barker is here.
Yes, he's here.
If he could probably...
Yeah, what's the total cost of the two, of each of the projects?
Total costs?
You expect, I understand, you know...
We expect, could be well in excess of $6, $7 million.
Okay. And the Motor Inn, is that's going to be retail on the bottom floor and then residential on, on upper levels, is that correct?
No, we're not able to redo the upper level. We wanted to, but to do so, we would have to do a seismic and wind retrofit for the entire building. So the current project is just to restore the first floor, which I hope everyone's been pleased with the progress we've made, and it will be retail and office.
Now, this isn't just the mo, this is the whole block there, I'm sure, isn't it? Not just the Motor Inn itself?
Well, it's about a, it's about a half, about a quarter of a square block.
I mean, you and I went and looked at the area one time, so... Except for the, the building closest to the railroad tracks, it doesn't include that one, right?
That's correct.
And then on Adam Street, what is the project there?
It's the old Staley Building, which was the original Sears Roebuck at 62023 East.
You're put, are you redo, making it into office space?
That is correct, sir.
And what's in the building now?
The building has been just gutted out, and now we're going in and doing the mechanical, electrical, and...
Before you took over the building, what was it used for?
It was vacant for about seven years prior to the time we bought it.
And had it been used for office space before that?
Yes, it had.
Okay, but it, okay, but it was not useful for office space in the condition it was in, I presume?
No, it wasn't.
Okay. All right, thanks, good luck with the project.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Barker, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but did anyone request you to prepare a written summary of your projects and an update on the current status of your projects for this meeting tonight?
Um, no. But I'll be glad to answer it.
I have to back Joe up. He requested that pretty clearly last Tuesday. And this isn't the first time that he's requested something like that, and it's not been done.
Would you have a problem preparing a written summary so that we can then consider this ordinance two weeks from tonight?
Sure. What, are there certain things that you'd like included?
Well, we're going to spend, the city is going to provide $2.5 million of funding, and I believe this is the second extension of the agreement between the city and you as a developer, and I think the council would like to see a progress report, written progress report, showing where the, the project is at and, and benchmarks, what your current goals are. A year ago, we learned that the goals for the Motor Inn had changed substantially, so it's, to a great extent, it's to your discretion as to what you should advise us, because we don't know what you're doing, therefore you have to tell us what you're doing.
Okay. Or I could answer any questions verbally, I'd be glad to this evening, whichever your preference would be.
I think it'd be helpful to have it in writing.
Okay.
Is there any problem in, certainly, I wouldn't be, no problem delaying it two weeks, since all we're doing is extending the, the time on this.
Have we got, have you got people just standing around while we're waiting for your report? Because that isn't good either. We're in the construction phase right now. Are we sending people home because we're delaying? Or, I mean, be truthful about this, if we are, you need to say that. I don't want to delay anybody's projects. We tend to do that, and when we do that, it costs more money. If we can keep going with the understanding that you're going to give us this report would help us, and I understand what Alderman is asking for, but I hate for delays just because we voted on the project, you just told us the scope's $7 million. I think we're voting on, what, $2 million or something, $2.00 something? So you've got a $5 million outlay of your own money out there, and we're saying, hey, we want you just to hold everything up until we get some papers. Well, to me, that's another delay. I want to keep the project going forward.
I don't think there's, would be any delay, because all this ordinance does is just extend the time period for completion.
Yeah, and I want to explain that it's just for the Staley building only. The Motor Inn part of the project, that will be completed by the end of this year, as was promised. And what happened with the Staley building, this last winter, we got into it, and it was a 90-year-old building, and you get in an old building, sometimes you get, end up running the...
I walked through the project with you, I saw it, I saw the mess you had, so...
And we ran into a lot more asbestos, and we thought, and it took a lot more time to tear it out and remediate it. And that put that part of the project behind it. And so the purpose for asking for this was to see if we could get a six-month extension for that part of the project, only so that the work could be completed in the work of a night manner, and we aren't having to have guys work on weekends and holiday weekends to get it done by the year end. So that was the reason.
Mayor?
Yes?
Bob, the scope of the work on the Staley building hasn't changed.
No, sir, it's not.
And actually, the work that's been done down at the corner of Fourth and Monroe looks very good.
Well, thank you very much.
It is a real improvement for anybody that has driven, driven by the, I mean, it's a night and day difference.
Mayor, I think, or Corporation Council, I think procedurally, we have a motion for passage on the floor, so if we're going to send it back to committee for two weeks, then whoever made that motion would, I think, would have to withdraw it.
That would be all those things. Is there a need to even send it back to committee?
Not for me.
Well, if we're going to, if we're going to hold it up for two weeks till we get the report, then we have to do something with it. We can't just let it sit out here in space.
Alderman. Mr. Mayor, there's no delay in your project to this, we're just extending the, the final deadline from December 31 to June 30, is that correct?
That is correct, and just for that one building only. The Motor Inn will be done as scheduled. And the only reason we're asking for this is because of the unexpected delay we had because of the gross amount of asbestos we found in the building we got in there. We had to take the walls out, we had to take all the ceilings out, it was a mess. So nothing has changed in terms of the scope of the project, or in terms of the intended use. We're just asking for an extension on that building only and for that purpose, and I gave the reason why.
So the purpose of passing this ordinance two weeks from now, instead of tonight, is to make the point that when the council, and this is no fault of yours, because apparently you'd never received the request, but to highlight the point that when the council asks for information, we, we expect to receive the information.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to hold up the developer, because we asked somebody for information, and now you want to penalize him. I see no reason to hold this up. There are other ways to ask staff, and disagree with staff, the staff's going to come up with other things, and that's the time you make your point. I don't think you make it on your, on a developer, I don't think that's fair. This guy's coming in here, he just told you what the delays were. It's asbestos, which here, again, the government puts all these requirements on, he's trying to fulfill that obligation. He had to take the ceilings out and the walls out, he didn't realize it, that's what they had to do. I see no reason not to vote this. Why penalize him?
Alderman, would there be any problem if we went ahead and passed this and just got three report in two weeks?
Again, I think the main point is when the city council asks for information, and no fault of yours, but I think we have to send a point that the department directors need to take those requests seriously and make sure that the requests of the aldermen are satisfied. And again, this is no penalty to Mr. Barker, because as you pointed out, your work continues, that's normal. This is no, this in no way affects the daily work schedule at the sites, so in answer to Alderman Edwards.
And just if I could make one comment, then I'll, I think that when this was brought up at the committee, the whole, and you asked for the report, the Director Farmer did indicate that the Markers were planning on being at the meeting and would be able to answer questions.
Well, I didn't, I didn't withdraw my request at that point.
And that may just have been a miscommunication. Alderman?
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Alderman Simpson has not made any desire to take that off, so I would call the question.
Question's been called. All those in favor, the call? Or just...
If there's no more debate, then you can go.
Well, we have to vote on the follow-up question.
All those in favor of the call? Say aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, further discussion, or if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes, number nine one. Emmett Barker, if you would go ahead and just give us that status report.
I'll be glad to, and we're always happy to comply with the request from the council.
Next item on the agenda is number 2013-417, an ordinance approving the appointment of Timothy E. Moore to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission as amended. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-417... Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-417 on final passage. Been moved and seconded discussion. Hearing no.
Yes, I'd just like to take this opportunity to, well, thank Mr. Moore and also thank Barbara Mason, the commission member who he's replacing, who gave us great service for, I think, at least two terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion carries 10-0. Is there any unfinished business to come before the city council? Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the status was. I got to talk to the owner of the building on the tax credits for the McFadden, I think it's the McFadden and the Booth Building. Why are we not, why isn't that moving forward?
Director Farmer, is he, did he just step out? The, they need, as I understand it, and we'll get Director Farmer in here to give you a better answer, but as I understand it, the situation was that we needed to expand the historic district in order for them to be able to get the credits that they were looking for. That required a study being done. My understanding is that study was done or finished a couple of weeks ago, it took a period of time. Director Alderman Edwards was asking about the status of the Booth and Ferguson Building and, you know, the holdup there in terms of the study and where we're at.
Well, you know, at the risk of getting something wrong, but I do want to mention that I had a conversation with Rick Lawrence, and he indicated to me that they're very close to finalizing an agreement with Senator Munoz to acquire that third property and bring it into the fold so that those three contiguous properties would, could be redeveloped together instead of having one in the middle that doesn't fit in architecturally or a sensible redevelopment. And so, as luck would have it, they both had the same attorney, so they had to find a separate attorney in order to not have a conflict of interest. I believe, again, my conversation with Rick Lawrence told me that they've completed that and they're very close to signing the papers. And what I suspect will happen then is that an additional request will be made from Mr. Lawrence with respect to the Munoz property and fold it into the larger redevelopment that's vice versa.
Well, I do, I think the mayor's right. Do we need to expand so we can get the historical tax credits? Is there something that we need to do there that we should be working on?
We've done everything we could do on that. It's actually a federal project, it's a federal.
There was a need to have a study done.
Yes, and that study's underway, and it's my understanding there too.
Is the study complete now?
Mr. Lawrence has been informed that he will be included in that historical district so that he can take advantage of that. But again, that's something that's beyond the city's purview, it's more of a federal.
Is there anything we can do to help push that forward? Call our senator or call, no, I mean, we, this is another deal where we slow down development because we're constantly waiting.
We're not slowing down.
It's not ours, I understand that, but some calls that can be made or anything like that to say we'd really like to do this?
We've done a lot of that, Alderman. So I think, I think we're where we need to be, and I think what we're waiting for now is just his final redevelopment package to be assembled. It includes the Munoz, and obviously there'll be another presentation here in front of council with respect to that property.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, Director, correct, we are, they're waiting for their buildings to be included so we can expand the National Register Historic District boundary, correct, from the federal side?
One property, and I can't remember which one it is, I don't believe it's the Ferguson, but I believe it's the other building that needs to be included in the historic district. So, yeah, but again, I think we're, we've cleared that, Earl, I think IHPA, working with feds, have, you know, given the indication that it will be included and it can go forward. And I think there's some regulatory approval process to get him where he needs to be with respect to that. I don't know all the intricacies of that particular.
I think IHPA meets on a quarterly basis to approve any new districts or any expansion to districts, so I think they meet quarterly.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they meet.
So it's not, I mean, I'm defending Director Farmer, because it's not, I agree, we do, but on this case, we're waiting on the state and the feds, and I think IHPA only meets, so they used to only meet quarterly to approve these, so.
Well, I just don't want, it sounded like a great project when the man said, and he's a friend of mine. We got to talking about where you were at, and it's like, I'm waiting, and it's like, here we go again, we're constantly waiting on somebody. And it's nice to see these projects, not your fault, move pretty quickly through the process. It's a beautiful project, and we need to have some of this stuff downtown to help draw downtown.
Well, if there's a good news side to this, you know, the inclusion of the third property, the Munoz property, you know, he needed to have that cleaned up legally, so the fact that the other issue was going on concurrently, at least, it wasn't catastrophic for him, so it's kind of a good news.
Alderman Simpson, and then I feel like Alderman Cannon. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not done though. Director, I think the Lakota group is, was who's doing the historic study, is that correct?
Actually, you're correct, that's correct.
Yeah, so are they, have they completed that study?
They, I've reached out to them several times, and they have not called me back. So I understand they're close to it, but I have not, I've asked for a meeting on at least three occasions and no response.
When we get that study, could you send a copy of it to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I've got a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm not in disagreement with Alderman Big Miniman that when we ask for something, we need to get it, and we need to get it between the time that we ask for and the next meeting. So we need to find a way to make sure that that happens, and I would suggest that if we don't get it within a reasonable timeframe, that we make some calls and find out why we haven't got it. The other thing, I had occasion to speak with Director Mahoney with regard to some Ida funds that may be available for applying, to apply for. And I didn't have all the information, but he did do some research, and I see that Senator McN, Andy Manar has provided some additional information with regard to this grant. So I don't know if you have it. There was a meeting today, I don't know if you made it, but there's a webinar on November 22nd, and you can, you can have this, because I think it's important, this deals with grant funds that the city may be able to get to deal with demolishing or rehabbing property, so that's a major concern to me.
Anything we can get, we could spend.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's not a problem.
Mayor?
The other thing?
Mayor, if I may, this is Treasurer Langfeller. I attended that as well as John Luke Casey and Abby Waldron.
So you did go today?
Right.
Excellent, very good. Director Hobby? We have contractors out, independent contractors out at, on site at C W O P.
You're talking about the water plant, the power plant site?
Yes. When there are incidents, are you notified when anything goes on that could possibly come back to bite us or create problems for us? And I'm asking because someone, I was told that $14,000 worth of tools were stolen. Was there a police report made, or was this somebody out there blowing smoke?
$14,000 of our tools or their tools?
No, their tools.
I don't know if they would normally report that to us or not. I mean, that would be up to them to file a police report. Of course, we're not going to pay for that.
That's the point I'm getting at. I just want to make sure that they're not billing us, if something comes up missing of theirs, that they're not somehow billing us to recoup whatever they've lost.
No, they're charged with locking up their own equipment, removing it from site, so that is not a liability we would normally take on at all.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Just a question to Treasurer Langfeller. This seminar you attended today, this had to do with money raised from a bill that was passed by the legislature that tacked on additional fees when plaintiffs file mortgage foreclosure suits, and then some of those additional fees go into a fund for downstate governments to use to maintain abandoned houses, like when these houses, a lot of times people can't pay their mortgage payments, and they just abandon their houses, and then they're in limbo until the bank takes the house over, is that correct? Is that what we're talking about?
The funds come from fees associated with foreclosures. John Luke Casey can add to it, I'm sure, but it was roughly about $300 that banks would pay for those type of properties.
Well, that's per complaint, I mean, that's not aggregate.
Right, but the portion that downstate Illinois would be in a competitive bid process for would be roughly $525,000. And so, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
So basically, how I got involved is Senator Manar sent me the letter as well, so I attended. There's a webinar, as Alderman Simpson had stated, that's later on this month, but I used to do grants similar to that when I was in banking.
But this would be something that, like Public Works, the Houston administration would have to apply for to get these funds then to use to maintain maybe insecure abandoned properties around the city of Springfield, is that correct? I mean, your office doesn't do that.
That's what the grant would be for, is for dilapidated areas. Basically, if you can do a proactive approach and draw in other organizations that are involved with rehabbing properties, the more comprehensive you can be, the better your chances in a competitive bid process. But that's corrected. Public Works, Economic Development, Enos Park Neighborhood Associations, T S B Hope, there's a lot of organizations that would have worked towards that.
It doesn't have to be a governmental agency, a private agency could apply for these grants?
These were for the city.
So the private agency cannot apply for these grants?
Not these particular ones, they are for the city, but they would bring something to the table with regards to the grant process. So that would bolster our efforts in obtaining those grant funds, because it is a competitive bid process to attain those funds.
The city could get the grant and then pay it, like the Enos Park Neighborhood Association to maintain abandoned houses, is that a possibility?
Well, it's more for demolitions, anything for rehab. So it's to reimburse costs associated with that project. So if the city incurs the cost, that's, would help towards that. Where Enos Park or other organizations would come into play is you try to leverage those resources to get the most bang for the buck.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council for purposes of holding executive session to discuss personal matters pursuant to 5 I L C S 120/2 C 1 of the Open Meetings Act and/or collective bargaining matters pursuant to 5 I L C S 120/2 C 2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and/or pending probable litigation pursuant to 5 I L C S 120/2 C 11 of the Open Meetings Act. Second discussion, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay. Oh, okay, all those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0.